Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, December 18, 2014, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. A quorum has been established. Administering the oath, are there any individuals who intend to speak before the Planning Commission today? They can just raise their right hand if they're going to speak. And do you promise to tell the truth to the Planning Commission as best you know it? Terrific, thank you. Disposition of minutes. Any changes, additions, or questions about the minutes from?
I sent a couple typo kind of clarifications to Sharon. She's incorporated them.
Yeah, I did notice that she corrected the city plan is presence and absence for the absence. So I would move to accept the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Cases, first case is number 14-16 Sprint, Monticello Towers Wireless Telecommunications, Special Use Permit modifications. Mr. Paskey?
Yes, this is, as you said, a modification for the Sprint on the Monocello. Yeah, this is Monticello. They're looking to put in three panel antennas, three RVs, jumpers growth and growth cabinet. And I'm gonna let them explain to you what that is. I have no idea. Emily is here, sitting back there, she can explain more. They have received a state building permit to do these alterations, and I also have a copy of the structural analysis. I did not run a copy of that for you guys, since it's rather lengthy here, but I do have it, and it's been signed off by an engineer and approved by the State of Ohio. This is a modification. It would be what we call a priority number two, which means an upgrade to an existing facility. Number one would be on a city-owned facility, or city-owned site, but this is not. This is the existing Monticello Tower. Any further questions? Emily can answer.
Okay, would you care to come up to the podium? And when you get up there, could you please state your name, the company you work for, and I guess your home office location, please?
My name is Emily Gallant, and I am with Shore Site Consulting, we're in Sprint. And our office is at 3659 Green Road.
Okay, thank you. Do you care to maybe give us a little intro as far as the, a little more detail in terms of the project, and what modifications you intend to carry out?
Sure, that was pretty much everything. It's cut and dry. It's three antennas, three ORUs, and then the associated jumpers and related ground equipment in an existing cabinet. So it won't affect the height or the footprint. The antennas aren't very large. There are Sprint antennas on the site already, so it's pretty much just an equipment upgrade.
Question? Is this gonna be a swap-out, or is this additional infrastructure on top of the tower?
It's an addition of three antennas, one on each sector.
Okay, so you're really keeping the stuff that you have up there already?
Correct.
And just adding more, and that's what the engineering studies, to make sure the wind load is capable of handling?
Yes, the structural is passing.
Were you the individual that we talked to on the conference in different? Okay.
But this, these plans are the same plans we saw earlier? And you had some concern about slippies or this cabinet? I just remember the scene.
Way back when, when they, yeah, and, but that was, that wasn't Sprint, that was another company, and that was a new cabinet. They coexist or co-mingle, or whatever the term is.
Co-locate.
Co-locate on these towers. There are a number of different.
Carriers in the tower.
Yeah, and, and small structures underneath within the fence for each one of the different providers, or carriers.
Yeah, Sprint already has a cabinet there, so we're not adding anything on the ground.
Now, Paul had a previous question a few meetings ago, as far as if previously agreed to modifications that were supposed to have been made, or?
That was a different, that's the one on the parking lot.
That's what I was asking.
All right.
I'm getting those things.
Not even the same consulting firm, so don't want to confuse her.
Lots of upgrades happening, so.
Okay, I guess it's not really our problem, because we're looking at destruction, you know, loading and the problems as designated by Title 23, I think it is, 43.
Forty.
I guess the question is, when you put these things up, is there always a danger of interfering with other people's broadcast or wavelengths or something like that? Or do you check that somehow? No?
There will be no interference.
Okay. Just wondering.
Were there any other questions or concerns? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion with the commission? Mayor?
I'd move we'd accept the plans as submitted, the modifications for the special use permit, 1416.
You all second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous?
Yep.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Next is case 14-15, the River Gate Apartment Complex, Homestead U.S. Green Drive, or Homestead U., South Green Drive, I'm sorry. Mr. Paskey?
Yes, I'm gonna pretty much just read the synopsis here in a second, but just a reminder that this one came as a preliminary case a month ago, and was introduced, and they haven't made any changes since then, if any. But this is Athens River Gate LLC, and they purchased the property currently known as the New Life Assembly of God Church, located at 264 South Green. Used to be 10 South Green, so a lot of the information they have is gonna say that, show it that way, before we readdress the buildings at OU. The proposed project's a three-and-a-half-story, 232-bed, 70-unit, multi-family apartment building, with the building elevated due to flood hazard requirements and parking underneath. Property is owned R3, is bordered to the north by the Rivers Edge Apartment Complex, and to the west by the River Park Apartment Complex, both of which are in the same ownership as the proposed project. The south is a high university property, the parking lot's in dorms right now, and to the east is the Hocking River, U.S. 33. Project was required to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for lot coverage variance of 77.5 percent, where 60 percent is the maximum allowed. The variance was granted by a five-to-zero vote on September 9, 2014. This decision has been appealed to Athens County Court of Common Police by the owners of the summit at Coots Run, but can move forward if they're, pretty much at their own risk at this time. Project owners understand no use permit will be granted until access and utility easements are completed and satisfy the requirements expressed within. I'll go over that briefly here. As I stated, the lot is owned R3, so it is a permissible use. It's approximately a two-and-a-half acre lot, two-and-a-half, yeah, two-and-a-half acre lot. It met all the requirements of bulk controls for parking, height, lot coverage, et cetera, et cetera, except for the total lot coverage, which did require a variance, and they did receive that, as I explained. They have the adequate number of bicycle parking spaces required, dumpsters provided, and the proper screening, and they did receive their approval from the Shade Tree Commission on November 13, 2014.
John, may I?
Yes.
Maybe I don't understand the side yard setback.
The side yard setback, they have 12 feet on one side and 18 feet on the other side, and eight foot is required as a minimum on one side, a total of 20. So they have a total of 30. They have a total of 30, and minimum.
Essentially, it's a lot, right? I mean, basically, they're adjacent property owners, two and a sm-.
I'm not even counting those. I'm just talking to specific properties. So they're okay on their side side. Our side yard requirement, bulk controls for that property require eight foot on one side and a total of 20, so basically eight and 12.
Yeah.
They have 12 on the left, 18 on the right, so they have the minimum, and their total combined is 30, so they're okay.
What is the left in there?
Fire chief did have some comments in regards to the stand pipes and the stairwells, and I'll let one of the Daves address that here in a little bit, and some other issues that he had, and his notes are in here on the next page, or one of the pages within here. Police chief did not have any comments. City planner, Paul, sitting next to me here, the only thing that we discussed was that it will need to meet the Title 25 FEMA requirements, and I believe it will do so, which is one foot above the base flood elevation for the second floor.
Above the parking area.
And then Andy's comments, Director of Engineering of Public Works, are rather lengthy, and that's the items, but primarily what we are after. And then they understand that there are a number, and I don't know if we need to go into all of them, but there are a number of easements that we are going to require that they have in place before we issue a use permit. And those easements include access easement from the university to the site, as well as any cross easements they have of existing sanitary water lines, et cetera, that are running across the existing structures or properties from Rivers Edge and River Park to the new water lines, to the existing water lines, whatever it may be. It's just an opportunity to get this all cleaned up at the time. That, a lot of it's stuff that's already there, between, it's in their same ownership that they already have, but we feel this is a great opportunity to get that all cleared up. And I think they're working with us very diligently to do so, and they're taking care of that. I'll let them share the information with you as to the easement with the university for access. It's my understanding that they have met with the university, and the university has proposed the name of the road in front of the building, Rufus Drive. So, that's what I learned yesterday.
Rufus Drive.
They're all kind of squinting, like they're not sure of that either, but I'll let them talk to you more about that.
I noticed on my schematics, the chief rimer has moved to hydrant, and essentially the easements are going to act. This would be a different situation if the adjacent property owners were not the same entity. They'd still have to go through the process of the easements for us.
That's why we're cleaning this up. Right now, the property to the north is Rivers Edge, and they are the owners of it.
Okay.
And there's a water line that runs down just to the west side of the proposed building through the Rivers Park property that, is water or sewer? Water. That we just want to get cleared up, that, you know, if, per se, they ever sold off one of the three, because basically they have three entities here now, if they ever wanted to sell off one, that there would be easements in place to go through the one to get the other for both access and for utilities.
Okay, I understand.
Go on, Tony back around the same thing. If something would happen and someone else would come along, could they tap into this line? Or is it owned by the developer, Rivers Edge?
Well, the line that's going to be going on, for sake of argument right now, says, well, let's call it Rufus Drive, the building, the street in front of the building. David can speak to more about that, but Andy has proposed that they put it in, but we're gonna maintain it. Is that?
Then we own it.
Yeah.
Right. And if the university wanted to build across the street, yes, they tap into it, and then we figure that out from there.
And who's paying for it?
When it's going in?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's like any other developers.
I know, but it's on a right-of-way. I mean, it's on a street, right? It'll cross the street? I know. It sounds a lot like old coach run to me.
Well, that's why the easements need to be put in.
That's why we're getting all this squared away ahead of time.
Yeah, okay.
Andy put in here a second option on sanitary, but I didn't think that was viable.
This was his report, and I think we've, we have determined, and they can speak more to that, what's gonna happen definitively on the utilities.
But if they're separate, I mean, you have to plan, I guess, that's why we're all asking the same question in a different way. You have to plan that it could break up, the entities could break up.
And that's why we're doing this. And keep in mind, they already are. Even though they're the same ownership right now, they already are three different projects, so to speak. So we're getting everything that's already existing in a lot of ways cleaned up that doesn't, that aren't, that isn't currently cleaned up. So this is an opportunity to fix a lot of issues here, and get things taken care of.
And will, will, will the deed reflect the possibility that someone, I mean, that it's a public, it will become a public?
Be recorded easements, absolutely.
And that'll be a public road eventually?
It's not our road.
It's not.
So I can't speak to that. It's the university.
We have a copy of the vacation, is that what?
That was one from, what year was it?
60, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that was before the river was relocated, wasn't it?
I think it's probably during the river.
We're probably thinking, Andy's, Andy's thinking that, that the reason the easement to the property went the way it did many years ago, and it still exists, is to avoid crossing over railroad tracks. It got them out of doing that. If you looked at where, we found pictures and aerials when the building was being built, and they did access the site during construction for the River Gate, or the River Park Apartments that was over the railroad tracks, but we figured that was probably a, I mean, the lake was still there.
It's called Lakeview, no mistake.
No, no, I'm talking River Park, the seven buildings, the bigger ones. We found pictures of those being built, and when the pond was still there, the lake was still there, and the access came over the railroad tracks, and then the easement that they obtained in 1968, six, seven, whatever it was, was going out through by, basically by peat and exiting out that way. Right now, they're working on that, because you can't really even get out there. There's a building sitting on top of the easement, so, that was given to them many years ago. So David Fisher, the attorney representing them, could speak more to that, and he's been in contact with the university and the state.
But when it's all said and done, it's gonna be a private road or a public road?
When it's all said and done, it's gonna be a university-owned right-of-way.
With our lines?
As it is now, as it is now.
All right, with our lines running under it?
That is correct.
Which they do all over this.
Which we do all, yep.
Right.
So, again, you know, university being a public entity, is it a private road or a public road? It's actually a private road for the university, for, in terms of what, we maintain it, we wouldn't be dealing with it.
They can close it, like they're doing on.
Yeah, but that would make a lot of people unhappy, I imagine.
Yeah? We'll see. But I don't know about that 1964. So Andy is satisfied?
Well, conditionally.
I mean, with this arrangement?
Right, a lot of the issues in regards to utilities, I'm sure, have been dealt with. It's just easements, and David is from Civil Williams, Advanced Civil can speak more to that, in regards to any of the utilities. But we have had numerous meetings with them, and I know they've been working with us, and I feel pretty confident they'll get everything taken care of.
I'm curious as to what was the emergency in 1964 to the Kate Warden Street?
I think it was a grant.
I put that in there just for everyone to say, to see that someday, or sometime years ago, that little bit of street that's what we're talking about now, Rufus, looked like it might have been called Warden, Warden Street. If we're going back, might have been three or four if Paul wasn't born.
If I was alive.
I didn't want to say anything.
So I forget the nomenclature for a street naming. I forget drives north-south or east-west, which is it?
As far as drives and streets, I don't know. I know about addressing, or number-wise. If it's even, then it should be the east and the north. If it's odd, it's the south and the west. That's numbering-wise. As far as street and drive, I don't know the answer.
I thought there was a system there.
It may be.
Typically, typically, streets run north-south, but.
Avenues east-west, or?
Except if the route changes.
Yeah, but there's no, it's not a hard and fast rule either. Some cities are a lot better at it than others. New York City is, Chicago, some of the larger cities are really good at it, they have a grid system, but I'm thinking of.
Not us.
It's topography.
Well, if you look at Columbus as an example, High Street runs north-south, but Broad Street, where, you know, intersects at east-west and north-south.
It's okay if you have a flat land, but if you have topography, that's still dissected.
But usually, street avenues run east-west.
Then you just change the name of the road four times on the same street, you know?
That would work, too.
Simpson, Carpenter, Lancaster, Columbus, you know?
Yeah, we do more of a British style, I would say.
I guess I'm just asking, because I could see somebody saying does Rufus Drive, or Rufus Road, and I could see we got a lot of wordplay there. I also noticed a lot of parking's underneath, on the first floor.
That is correct.
Okay, and they have adequate parking, obviously.
Yes.
How much excess? Do they have any excess?
I think they're right at the number.
Okay.
Right at. They did a little modifications with some parking spaces out front, but last time I checked, they were right at 232.
And I noticed there was a notation from Andy Stone about occurs in a coffee building, grease interceptor may be required, so there is gonna be a?
They, it's coffee-making only, and since that's the case, they don't need one.
Okay.
They just want to make sure it wasn't a operational full-blown kitchen within the building.
With all the grease problems that we've had in the past, okay. In terms of indoor/outdoor parking, because some of it will be outside, some of it will be inside, it looks like.
Correct, and I'll let them explain a little bit to you on that, but part of the outdoor is actually impermeable safe surface and/or pavers to, by putting that in, they actually took the lot coverage down to 60 percent, and that was one of the.
Impermeable.
But I still counted it against them, because there's no guarantee that it there, it's gonna be maintained that way, so.
Okay.
But they can, they can discuss that.
There's no report from the police chief, who usually handles lighting, well, lighting?
He said he had no issues with the project, because they will have adequate lighting.
In the garage as well, right?
That'll be a requirement underneath by state code, yes.
And they'll have onsite management, I assume?
They have onsite management now.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Dave Anderson can speak to that a little more.
Do you know if the number of accessible parking spaces meets ADA requirement?
Good question.
I do not know. That's a good question, I can look into that.
I feel like more than 200 needs.
232?
Yeah, I would think it would be more than five, and five are all I can see.
That's a good question, I have to look into.
Where's the fifth one? I see four. I see one. Oh, I see that, the other one right there, there, and then two there. Two inside, three outside.
I'm not sure what the numbers are, but I would, I would think that, I'm thinking six or seven at that point.
I'm sure in a project this side that one of the facility, one of the units is probably entirely handicap accessible. You do have elevators in this, correct? But that's something we can definitely look into.
Speaking of lighting, it's, it's like daylight, because the high university took it on themselves to do the improvements to the end of Mill Street, where our city right-of-way is, and then the extension of South Green Drive, and there are multiple decorative lighting fixtures in there.
Mill Street, isn't it?
And then, of course, when they light up the recreation field, you can see it from the moon.
But just, you know, ambient lighting for walking around.
But I think that, basically, I feel that the lighting in that area and along that roadway, at least, has been improved, so.
Did any of your representatives care to speak, or address any points that are being talked about?
I think you're supposed to say any of the Daves.
I'm David Fisher with Kephart Fisher, I'm the lawyer involved in the process. I got David Anderson, who is with Homestead U., and is also a part of the ownership of this project known as CEP River Gate, and I've got David Deniston, who's with Advanced Civil Design, who's there to answer engineering questions for you. I want to go through a presentation, but a couple of points I want to address. You ask about property management, David Anderson, Homestead U., they do have owner-managed projects, which puts them apart, sets them apart from a lot of other student housing projects at the, on the OU campus and other, where, other places around the United States where they own and manage property. So there, it's owner-managed property, which we think is a huge distinction in terms of accessibility, accountability, looking after the project, keeping it the highest quality. I think some of you probably know that there's been a real philosophical change at River Park and Rivers Edge since the ownership change occurred a couple of years ago. They have been very purposeful about changing the image from a party venue to a responsible student project that students and their parents can both be proud to be a part of, and that, they're gonna continue that theme over at River Park when they move forward with that. I'll try to answer some of the engineering questions very simplistically, and David Deniston can answer them more exactly if you need to. The short answer is, all requests made by city departments and city officials, we agree with. So where you see fire hydrants being requested, we agree with those locations, where you see easements being requested for utilities, we agree with all those requests. With respect to the sanitary sewer easement, there was some discussion about, did we connect into some old lines coming across River Park? We thought it was in everybody's best interest to spend the additional cost to put the public sewer line coming down what we still call South Green Drive, and I'll say Rufus, but I'm having a hard time with that one, John. Rufus Drive, but we have agreed, that will be installed at developer expense to, and that will be a public sewer once installed. We have asked the city to give some consideration to, at such time as others, including OU, would tap into it, that perhaps there be some sort of reimbursement formula for that, so we'll leave that to your city administrative folks to talk with us about in the future. We did agree with the water line loop that's been requested, we will be doing the new water line coming down the north-south extension of South Green Drive. So that's a couple of high points. With that, I don't want to take a lot of time on the presentation, but I do think it's important that you understand as much about this project as we can share with you in the short amount of time we have together today. This is an illustrative view of how this project would look. This is coming into the project, so heading towards the river, this would be the corner edge of the project along Rufus Drive, so Rufus would be going off to the right if you look at that drawing. So this is an illustrative architectural rendering that shows you how the project is gonna look once constructed. Oops, going too fast. This, just for information, is our design team that's been involved in this, our project team. As I mentioned, you got David Anderson from Homestead U. today. The other partner in this is, his partner, a company by the name of Columbus Specific Properties. Alfred Construction is in final negotiations on a construction contract. I was gonna mention that to you, John, your summary talks about contractor being the owner.
I missed that one.
No problem. And then we've got another, the others involved in the group, we got CM Midwest as the owner's representative. All the architectural work is being done by the Sullivan Bruck Firm out of Columbus. All the land planning and site design work is being done by MKSK out of Columbus. I introduced you to David Deniston from Advanced Civil Design a few minutes ago, and I'm David Fisher with Kephart Fisher. This gives you a good overview of how this project interrelates with everything that's going on around it. I'm sorry I didn't bring a pointer today, but you see our River Park project, sort of in the center of the screen. You see our River Gate project, if you can look at this screen. Here's Rivers Edge project here, and then this is the new proposed River Gate project. This also shows the interconnectivity of streets around the project, including, when we meet with OU, and we met with them repeatedly over the last six or nine months, they keep mentioning this green, this future green, sweet pedestrian, so we're not here to talk about it with you, but we simply showed it illustratively, illustratively in our plans, so you know how that works. We have another slide further along that shows you where the access easements occur and how they occur.
We had a question. The arrow line in the middle, says, does that say 2014 pedestrian path?
2014 pedestrian path, yeah, that's not very clear, I apologize. We had a higher resolution of all this, but your AV people said it takes too long to load, so this is a little lower. But yeah, that's a pedestrian connection down to the riverbank, so. And that's not installed by us, that's an OU project.
So, as you're, as we look at this, and we say, well, gee, if there were a fire, or the need for the fire trucks, in the past, to go to your property, which I always think of as Lakeview, because I lived there once, but back in the, back in the wayback days, but they would come across on McKinley Avenue, and, well.
They'll come down to the.
Well, I'm, I'm asking him that, actually. I want to know what, so how would a fire truck get in there? Go along Stewart Street?
I'm not the one qualified to answer that question.
Yeah, that's one of the discussions we had. They'll come down Mill Street, and come around the new extension, and then come in behind the building where we, where the chief wanted all the fire hydrants put in the back of the building.
That's why the fire chief wanted these fire hydrants.
Or out front, where he wanted the stand pipe put in.
What if there's a flood or something?
Excuse me?
What if there's a flood? I mean, I just wonder, it's very isolated and protected there, and the flows, from the first time you talked to us, I really love the project, I like the way it looks, I like everything about it, but I'm concerned about the flows, pedestrians, traffic, and everything else.
I would say that the fire chief feels this is a major improvement in terms of access. Right now, it's incredibly difficult to navigate.
Right, I mean, I agree, but it's also very much flood, floodway. Flood way.
Is it floodway, or is it flood fringe?
Flood point, flood fringe.
It's not floodway.
It's not floodway, that close to the river because of the elevations?
The floodway is in, is in the channel project.
Is in the channel?
Correct.[1736.94]
In that area?
Yes.
Wasn't always that way. The old man used to. Okay, so it's the fringe. Oh, good. No, I'm still concerned about them, but I'll be concerned till I...
Excuse me, you want me to go back to that slide a minute?
I was just saying that they're not, I mean, they're just the developers for this project. And they're, they were just adding what OU is proposing as possible modifications in the future. But that's kind of outside the scope or jurisdiction.
I spent a lot of time down there. I know how that place works and the...
I would also suggest to you that the new South Green Drive extension is going to assist in emergency services of all types as well. And I think that's probably the reason why the fire chief, so this whole new extension here, that's probably why the fire chief wanted these hydrants in here. Because it gives him new access he didn't have before, even to the existing projects that are there.
The south is what Mr. Paskey calls Rufus Drive?
I'm sorry?
Well, that's proposed by a high university.
Okay, that name. But it doesn't connect with Stewart Street, does it?
Not yet, but in the future.
No, no, no.
We're working on that, too. We, we have talked to them and that, that, I don't think that's going to be anything that holds us up, but Andy and I have requested that they research taking Rufus Drive all the way over to Stewart.
I mean, that's the thing that worries me, right?
They, well, it's...
Concerns, then, concerns. I don't have other worries.
They own the parking lot that we would have to do that. So they would be going through their parking lot, correct? That is yours.
That's right. And you have a significant number of parking spaces lost. We're going to be talking to OU about that.
There's some green space there, too, that, you know, scrub, scruffy grass that you could go across and replace your parking.
I do want to share with you, I forget who raised the question, I think it may be several of you. No one more than us would love for these all to be publicly dedicated roadways.
I think that was...
I mean, this is, we, we just came to the party and this is what we discovered. And we continue to ask OU that question whenever we meet with them. And they've never been willing to have a discussion towards that end. I think they like the fact that they own these roads and control these roads and give us easements over them to use them. But I just want to make, I want to make sure you understand, we're in your camp, that it'd be a lot easier for all of us if these were publicly dedicated roadways.
I agree.
And again, it's pretty, if I understand correctly, for OU to vacate land, it's a, it's a process going all the way up to Columbus to do that, whereas...
Well, they don't sell it, but not, you know, I mean, it's, we use the part of their land in the roundabout.
You're talking about easements versus vacating and making a public roadway.
But connection has nothing to do with it, right?
Well...
The connection is a separate question. The, the land ownership is another question.
Yes. But I assume that, what I'm looking at here, it looks like they're trying to generate a access to it.
And we're going to, by the way, there's a better access management drawing that I'll show you when we get to it.
Okay.
That, that was more of a perspective of understanding what's going on around us. But there's, there's a drawing later in our presentation that explains all the easements to you and how they interrelate.
Yeah, and...
This is a site plan rendering that simply shows you how the site will, will be built out. Shows you the configuration of the building, how it fits on the lot. Shows you the green, shows you the landscaping, shows you the podium on which the pool will be constructed. Shows you the surface parking, therefore, you realize what's under the building is also parking. And we'll have another slide that gives you more detail on that. We'll get to you more detail on the green space and more detail to explain to you the point Mr. Paskey made earlier about the use of pervious surfaces that would, when you apply them, would bring our coverage down to within your code requirements. Interestingly enough, I'll point out to you that when we got in this process and we were working to the BZA, we went back and did a lot of research in terms of, as you know, the lot coverage issue was a relatively recent change in your code. And so we stood a lot of time studying what we call in the business the legislative history. Why did you, why was lot coverage important? And what we came, kept coming back to time and again at every step in the process was, it was in large part, not only aesthetic issues, but also stormwater management within the city. And that's why we tried to accommodate, and you're going to see some slides later on that show you how far we went to try to accommodate, to say, if stormwater management is the issue, we're going to employ techniques to address the stormwater management issue, even though we're above your permitted lot coverage. And I'll give you a little more detail on that as we go through this.
And we contend it's, where do the children play?
RISB.
I mean, so when it's all built out, there's no...
Right. Well, and we also understand that it's easy for us to talk about these concepts in the context of a project of this size. But I also think, when I drive around your fair city and realize what the issue with the lot coverage, I also get it that Joe and Sally own a house, and they say, let's turn this into student apartments. And they say, let's pave every piece of this property so all these students can park here. We get the issue, we really do.
Really, that is the case. It spun out of the '97 ordinance about requiring one bedroom, one parking space. And then the, the reaction to that was to pave the entire back lots.
Right.
And then, of course, stormwater issues came to the forefront and saying, okay, we need to look at that in terms of lot coverage.
And interestingly enough, you know, we spent some time at BZA on this project. And you raised the question about parking earlier. We have a lot of empirical data from River Park and River's Edge that we have a lot of residents there that don't bring cars and don't park cars there. In large part, given our proximity to the campus, the walkability, the, if it's a word, bikeability over to campus. But nonetheless, we realized to move forward, we needed to provide the one-for-one parking. But I can assure you, we have a lot of empirical data that suggests that we, in our location, in close proximity to the university, in close proximity to downtown, we have residents that don't require cars.
At the same time, occasionally, episodically, there is a, a capacity issue when move-in and move-out occurs. Everybody goes home, gets a car, to pack it up and...
Absolutely, yeah. And by the way, and that's why we looked at the, the pervious pavement issue, which, by the way, is on this slide now, if you can get, I guess, your AV. That's why we use, especially this green area at the top, accepting and agreeing with those episodic events, as you call them, where you do need all that extra parking. You've got it, but when you don't need it, you got green. And you got stormwater management that arises and can occur out of that. So this shows you how, in the top, the green, we've got the grass pavers. Other areas, we're using what's called pervious pavement, which allows pervious concrete, which allows the stormwater to drain through it as opposed to run off into drains and, and ultimately into the rest of your stormwater management system.
Offhand, do you know what the water table is at that point? I mean, we're in the flood fringe. And I always thought this permeable concrete or asphalt situation usually has two criterias. One is a low water table, the other one is a fairly flat area. You have a flat area. Next question is, where's the water table? I hate to see it seeping up from below.
And we don't...
Just wondering, I, this is concern. I don't expect...
Don't have that information available. I know this is about plan review, but I want to make sure that we talked a little bit about architecture. And I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, if you want to spend more, we can. I showed you the first slide that showed you generally. So this is our south elevations, that's not coming through at all. That's not even worthy of looking at because you can't see anything, see if any of these others...
Coast buildings.
It's foggy down in the river.
Yeah. This is an important slide to you. When we talk about the, our presentation to a BZA in terms of stormwater management. And by the way, the other issue that we saw that arose in the context of your lot coverage legislation was, in its history, was the concern about Athens pride of being a tree city USA. And so the developer in this case has agreed, and it's a part of his BZA conditions, that we will install four-inch caliper trees at install versus two-inch caliper trees. You can see the distinction with the tape measure at the top. And more importantly, you can see the distinction at the bottom with the human person standing next to a tree. So this, this project is going to come out of the box a lot greener than a typical new project would come out of the ground in Athens, Ohio. These are floor plans. I don't think they're even helpful to you in the context of this scale. And I know that's not really the purpose of your review today. There's a couple of pages of those. Roof plan, and then here's some exterior elevations that, once again, don't do justice to the project the same way the first drawing I showed you did. When we were starting our presentation, well, it's hard to see it from there because these are so close. Do you have these in your booklet?
We do. I assume, it's the same, April 2014?
Yeah, these have not changed. And then we have a lot of detail here, the grading and erosion control plan that your engineering and development staff have reviewed.
There, there's no bill proposed with this or no change of elevation?
No, because we're going to, and that's the reason for the podium. We're doing podium construction to not raise the elevation. There's two ways to build this. One is to bring a great bunch of fill, which is what happened at River's Edge next door, and the other is to build on a podium.
Do you know, do you know how high above base flood elevation the first...
One's got to be one foot above, right? That'd be, the base floor elevation has to be one foot above the base flood elevation.
Correct, right. Right, it's about 10 or 11 feet if I'm not...
So if you look next door to River's Edge, you can see exactly, because that's what they did. They brought in fill to one foot above.
Above grade, okay.
That'd be one foot above base flood.
So the concept here is all the parking will be the, the fill rather than fill. And, okay.
Wait, have you, has this permit application for floodplain development been submitted yet?
They'll do that at the time, after they get their state building permit, when they go out for a use permit with us. At that time, they'll ask, they'll go out for a special flood hazard as well. And they'll give us a certificate, flood elevation certificate preliminary, because the building's not built yet. And then they'll do another one at completion.
Okay.
This is the site utility plan, which you've seen markup of that in your materials and Mr. Paskey's report. And once again, we have agreed to all the requirements for site utility services. This is the drawing I wanted to spend a little bit more... By the way, I mentioned earlier, we've had repeated meetings with OU folks about easement requirements. And there's another meeting occurring in my office in Columbus tomorrow with them to hopefully finalize this. And we couldn't finalize, and it really, we came down and met with John and Andy 10 days ago and made sure we were all in agreement what the ask was. So what you see here is, the red is easements that we currently have from OU that we will retain. So you see three areas red. Interestingly enough, and John mentioned earlier, we currently have an easement that goes up like this. But as he pointed out, they just, after they gave us the easement, they decided to build a building in the middle of it. So we were, we're going to do what we call reload that easement. So we'll reload that easement with OU. And then the yellow is the easement to be released, which is this old easement here which we no longer need. And then the green are all new easements that are essentially the new loop of South Green Drive up here and this area that is now being referred to as Rufus. So those will be our asks from OU with respect to access easements, many of which we already have for River Park and River's Edge. And then additionally, we will ask at the same time for a sanitary sewer easement to allow us to come down this green and onto this red to connect into the trunk sewer line for that newly dedicated sanitary sewer line to serve this project. And we'll work with both OU and the Pockings Conservancy to get an easement for this water line on this side of the property. So, and we understand those are all conditioned to the approval and conditions of pulling up the mill on this project.
Was this slide included in this booklet?
No, because it was still in process.
No wonder we can't buy it.
No wonder you can't buy it.
Yeah, this is, this is a pretty recent iteration after we last met with John and Andy to discuss it. But we think this works. And we think OU, OU has already agreed to all of this, except we've never asked them for this. But I don't know why they wouldn't give it to us, because it's a practical matter. It is a part of the, the traffic circulation for the project.
The one that's existing now.
Yeah, it's in existence and people are used to it.
The way it runs now, David, if you've shown, is to the western part, going down McKinley and then through, in front of the, what do they call it, the front four.
Yeah, you're talking about the yellow line?
Right.
And, and then there's a building, and then it came, and then it went west towards Richland by the baseball, the old baseball fields, Punch Card Park, I think it is now, and, and Peden.
Dormitory.
So that's, that's where it went before. And then, as you can see, a building was built there. So what they're probably going to request is they just, not only do they get the other ones that they're proposing, but instead of going that direction in front of the front four, just running it around the loop along the river there of South Green Drive and just tying it in that way. So, since the other part doesn't exist anymore. And they did have one, and it, there's been an easement there to that project since 1967 or 68.
Get a close-up. And David can always expand it from 52% to 60 if you want to move it around. Question, you said you had data, how, how many people actually use the parking lots? And again, the requirement is one bed, one parking space. Your adjacent complexes, do you have an, a guesstimate of how many actually...
Isn't it 70-some percent, David?
78%.
78%? I see, okay.
Why would you need an easement for South Green Drive?
So, because OU owns it.
Oh, to drive them?
To make it, formalize it, because you never know.
Because they could close it against your...
You're right, from a practical standpoint, I mean, you drive down South Green Drive if you feel like it. Everybody can drive down South Green Drive. But it's a legal issue that, from a legal access standpoint, we need to have easements.
Yeah. Let's clean it up that way.
Well, I mean, either way, we're setting in, public roads are really a high university on roads.
Blasely, public. Every, this property technically is landlocked by the university. So they have to get...
Easements.
Easements to get to it.
Does it happen anything?
And they have an easement. They do, they have, they've had one since 1968. And it gets renewed every 25 years. And we found the records where it has been renewed every 25 years. But no one ever went and verified if that easement existed as the way it was originally written.
Well, we did, and that's what happened. What happened is, everything you see in red, plus this was in red. We have, we have legal rights to those easements. When we went to buy the New Life Church, they had along the way forgotten to make sure they had a valid easement. That's one of the reasons we kind of got held up for so long with them. Because this little area green here, there's a road there, but the church has no right to the easement, so they couldn't assign the right to us. So we didn't have legal access to the parcel.
So the, the North McKinley, is that where they dropped Adams?
Say that again?
Okay.
North McKinley, is that where they dropped?
North McKinley, what used to be red is now yellow, but then they dropped the new dorm.
Right.
Right.
That's right.
Okay.
Which, interestingly enough, they reloaded that easement for us when we bought River Park and River's Edge, and that new dorm was already there. And they never mentioned the fact that we didn't have it anymore.
So...
They probably didn't know.
Questions? I noticed that South Green Drive does have a series of speed bumps on it. Is there an intention to keep those in place? I mean, if you're going to... Is this a conversation you're having with...
We've not had a conversation about speed bumps, nor do I think we'd get very far with that. I mean, all we're asking is, hey, can we have access to use these streets?
Okay. I was just thinking of adding more capacity on the road, and all of a sudden you have, you know, endless clunks and bumps.
Someone's going to have to be calming, it's, right now, it looks like.
And then the other comment I want to make to you with respect to easements is, we are going to grant what I'd call blanket easements, because it's not worth anybody's time and effort and money to find where every little line goes through these properties. But we're going to grant cross easements among the three projects owned by our client so that any utility connections, any parking, any access, that everybody has rights for the very reason recited earlier, that if for some reason these projects would be split apart in the future and they have different ownership, everybody would have, correct. So, and we've talked with Mr. Paskey about that, and that's what we're going to do.
To assign ease, so to speak, okay.
Now, the other point I'd raised to you, and I think this gentleman raised it earlier. The problem with all these easements with OU is, I'm going to meet with their lawyer tomorrow in Columbus, and he's a very nice man. In fact, he hasn't been in Columbus because his son's having a tonsillectomy. That's why we're meeting up there. And we'll get done in about a week or two, and we'll have everything ready to go. And then it goes to the Department of Administrative Services at the state. And this is this hole it falls into until the governor and with his huge felt pen somehow shows up one day in Arrakis, they, they announce your easements are ready to be picked up. And as you know, that can take four weeks, easily.
I would consider that rapid.
I agree.
He's being generous.
And then, this is a slide we shared with the BZA, just for, just so the community at large appreciates the impact of this project on the city of Athens. Near term, this is going to be about a $15 million project. I think that's the number Mr. Paskey had in his report. About 100 construction jobs here in the local area. $150,000 in local income taxes paid just during construction. And $340,000 in permit and tap fees paid to the city of Athens. Long term, you'll have $300,000 in annual property taxes. Keep in mind that today, this property owned by a church has been exempt from all real estate taxes. So your school districts and your other agencies and departments have never seen a dime of tax revenue on this project. That's going to go from zero to 300,000. And, by the way, this is a very rough allocation, as you, you know, probably. Your school taxes around Ohio, the way we're taxed, is about 73% to 75% of your tax dollar goes to schools. So we're estimating $225,000 annually to Athens City Schools that they've never seen from this property. $71,000 to Athens County, $11,000 to Tri-County Career, $9,000 to the city of Athens, and some minor amounts to Athens Township. But all brand spanking new tax dollars that you've never seen before from this project, from this property. And in conclusion, that is, once again, the same elevation. It gives you an idea of once, once it's up and built and you've got people coming to and fro and cars on, I've got to say it again, Rufus Drive. fro, and cars on, I've gotta say it again, Rufus Drive. Happy to answer any questions. If you need more engineering detail, David Dennison can answer those questions. If you need more property management, parking, residence, those sorts of issues, Dave Anderson's here to answer those questions. And I, of course, am available as well. So look forward to working with you through this process today and answering questions and issues you may have. Thank you.
We have a couple residents in the audience. Did anybody care to ask a question? Okay. Okay. To reiterate what Christie was saying about the handicap parking, is that the right ratio for so many parking spaces?
I'm assuming that number came from our architect, Sullivan Brock. They're experts, they understand codes. I will tell you, if it's not correct, it will be correct.
Okay.
We're not gonna, I'll answer it a different way. We're not gonna get a building from the state of Ohio unless we have the right for handicap parking.
I understand.
It's in our location.
Okay. Let me ask a question. Is Mulberry Street going to be closed?
Today?
No. No, no, no. Don't toy with me.
Mulberry Street's gonna be open in January. Are you talking about Mulberry Street being east Mulberry?
I want to know, is it going to be, is it our street and will it be closed?
Are you talking about Morton Hill?
No, I'm talking about Mulberry Street, and here it is, right here.
Mulberry by Baker? No, that's not gonna be closed.
Mulberry's gonna be reopened.
Are you talking about Park Place?
No, there's, when you go down Stewart Street, there's a left-hand turn that goes into the old South, or new South Green, whichever it is, never lived in the girl. Is that one going to be closed?
Oh, you're talking about down there.
Is it Mulberry Street?
I mean, that, that is their plan, and I think it's outside of, of this project presentation, because that is their plan, to make that a pedestrian corridor and have it just be...
But they own that jut of land over to there, right?
Mm-hmm. That's why this...
You're talking about that walk in that green area?
Yeah.
What they told us when we met with them is that that is the, that that is the pathway of the old railroad track, and that they want to do that to create this pedestrian corridor through there to...
No, that's, I'm talking about the, on Stewart Street, as you're driving toward the soon-to-be green space, there is a street that you take a left on to go in sometimes to the South Green.
Nelson, towards Nelson.
Well, yeah.
To the, to Nelson, Nelson.
Crawford and some of the others are there.
Are you talking, referring to where the Islamic Center is?
No. I'm talking about, no.
What?
By the basketball court, it's just to the immediate corner of the basketball court.
You have to do a jog.
A short stretch, maybe 75 feet.
It's right on the map here, just look at this map. I mean, I wanna, because on the subsequent maps, it was shown that your property juts around it. You have an area that juts out from the initial five or six buildings that you had up in the...
Right here.
Right here, yeah.
Yes.
But no, that's Mulberry Street, and it goes over like this. When people access the parking lot, they will go in that way.
On that slide 20...
This one?
Okay, well, let's get right to it.
This one you're looking at?
Just consider Mulberry Street too. I mean, it's, I'm not dreaming.
No.
Okay. So you go over like that and you come in. Is this going to be closed in the future? I mean, you're the ones that are talking to them, I have no idea. You don't know.
The idea is to clean up so that it gets...
Never been a conversation.
So that it does go through.
Well, I'm assuming this greensweep requires city approval, because that's a public street anyway, John.
No, no. I, I don't think I would assume anything like that.
John, is the greensweep a public street right now in that area? Is that all OU on?
It's OU, I think.
See, all right, so we're talking about a lot of traffic that's going to be diverted.
Some part of it is ours, though.
Well, yeah.
Only to like half of Washington Hall entrance or whatever, on Stewart, so it ends there.
Do you understand what I'm saying, that there is a problem, a circulation problem potentially?
Oh, there'll always be a circulation problem.
Well, there doesn't always have to be one, if somebody would think about it in advance and ask it.
I think we have, Nancy, and Andy and I have talked a lot about it. We basically have created a square between Stewart, Rufus, South Green Drive, and Mill Street. We've basically created a square that does not exist today.
Well, right now, the people use, people use a multitude of different pathways in there. And, you know, so now it'll be a big street that's very narrow and has speed bumps on it that will be the major pathway. But I would like to know, is there any way that we could persuade you to try and get that access to Rufus Drive to...
Stewart.
Stewart Street?
That's, that's what was presented, but that's kind of...
Yeah, I know, but he doesn't have it yet.
Yeah, but it's gonna require discussion with OU, and we're having those discussions, and I'll do those tomorrow.
Yeah, and you're gonna have it tomorrow? Okay. I mean, it's, for me, it's a priority. I live in the city and I...
Right.
Where the difficulty comes for them, although they own the property that goes over to Stewart, in order to connect that through, it's taken away quite a bit of their parking for River Park.
I know, he already said that, and he also has this sprightly-looking grass there that he could replace.
And, and, you know, one of the asks of OU is, since they feel strongly about that connection as well, is to suggest to them that maybe we do a land swap for some of the land that they have in the area.
Okay, one more tenacious question. I would like to see you somehow, right now, to help future city councils. If you have a tap-in requirement for this infrastructure you're paying for, I'd like to see it formalized.
Isn't that in your city structure already?
What was that?
It's the...
The tap-in. If it's their line and they built it, he said that he was going to...
It's gonna be turned over to us.
It's your line.
Yeah, and he said if anyone taps into it, he wants to have some...
No, we're gonna ask, we've asked the city to consider that.
Okay.
And by the way, the city could say no.
No, no, you have to ask the people tapping in, don't you?
No, no.
I mean, council...
It's your line.
It'd be a reimbursement, the city would have to...
All right, old coach run, I'm sorry, old coach run. We own the line, and the tap-ins that came were required to pay to share the cost of building the line. And it was a mess.
Okay, you're talking about the tap fees after the fact it was accepted?
No, no, I'm not talking about tap fees. This was, you know, basically an existing line that people were tapping into.
What they're gonna be asking for is, they're putting in the sanitary line, and they're asking if the university ever comes in and develops on the parking lot to the south of the building and puts in a tap, if they can, they can receive those tap fees. That's what they're asking for.
Oh, I guess that...
Because they're the ones that are incurring the cost to put it in.
It would be a new capacity fee for the next development.
That's right.
Yep.
And we just approved, and because we had a model before, both for the Uptown, whatever, Verizon Frontier GTE building, and similar to Kevin Klein's Hickory Street development, where there was some cost sharing with the city because there was a greater need for public improvement there, where the city's, doesn't have that need in this corner of the world. Well...
You know, but I went to court over capacity fees and tap fees.
Yes.
And they cover the existing development. And so I guess the city wouldn't give up, well, maybe the city would. City wouldn't give up its duly needed tap-in fee.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna do that. I don't think that's...
No, he was talking about, well...
I heard him saying about trying to reach an agreement with the city, so in the future they obtain some of that credit or whatever. But the, any new...
But that wouldn't be done by the engineer, that would be done by council, wouldn't it?
Any new structure or proposal for additional land use, whatevers to be built there, they're gonna have their own capacity fees that wouldn't be going back to you, it would be going back just based on...
Would have to go to the city. But maybe some cost of the line is what I thought he was saying.
By the way, I don't understand your structure. Quite often, you have a tap fee and you have a capacity fee, and you have a user fee.
They're the same. I mean, they're a total amount, I mean, they're not the same...
By the way, is this a deal breaker for us now?
No, no.
Would we like some consideration at the time to say, hey, we encountered all, we incurred all the expense of a line that we upsized to serve other development in the area? It seems only fair to us that whether it's through direct agreement with OU or through the city enforcement agreement to say, everyone should pay their fair share. And by the way, if everybody says no, I guess everybody says no.
I mean, wouldn't it be better to dispel that out in advance? I mean, we're not, I don't think the city will give up its tap fees.
I don't think it'll be spelled out in advance, and it's not that big an issue that we want to withhold moving forward with approvals to try to figure it out.
Do you hear that?
What is the existing line, do you know?
The existing line right now.
Is he just indicating size? Because I just heard upsize.
Yeah, that's the problem.
The existing line goes underneath the existing River Park buildings, and they ran a camera through it this week, and they found some clogs. Technically, if they really wanted to, they could probably clean all that out and run it in there. And that's some of the comments that they've put in here. And Andy had said, hey, I'd like for you guys to do it this way, in case the university ever came in and wanted to do this on the south side of Rufus.
That's a very good point. That's a very good point. In other words, we're doing this in partisan accommodation to the city because we have capacity and access to the wind, the sewer lines are already there.
It's the university.
Is it an existing eight-inch line, do you know?
The line that's going in on Rufus does not exist.
No, the line that's over the building.
No, the line that goes out of the building.
The six or eight.
I believe it's an eight.
Believe it's an eight.
Okay, but repair that would take, inquire either, you know, how is that the boring? Removing the building, doing...
I just heard upsize, but what actually what I hear is, is the same size.
Upsize isn't really the right, probably more improve or spin in a new one.
You're talking about a lot of doubt in a very small space, a lot of traffic.
By the way, another engineering question was raised earlier, and Mr. Dennison looked up on his phone, the groundwater in that area is an average of 11 to 17 feet below grade.
Okay, just wondered, yeah.
Except when it's at flood stage, so that's...
That's good to know.
Good question.
Yeah, get a soggy parking lot.
What's that?
The ADA answer.
What's the ADA answer?
Seven are required and seven have been provided. The point that you have may not add to the handicap plans. Do you have seven with one, including one van accessible?
Okay.
So seven is required by code and seven would be...
I think I'm getting it.
Okay, good to know. I'm only seeing five, but again...
I'm only seeing five too, and I think when you get above six, you have to have two van-accessible spaces.
Okay. Thanks for knowing that stuff.
They have done. These are more recent. These are the ones when they originally went to the BZA. And a lot of the comments that Andy and I addressed are in these. I do not, I did not have a reduced version to share with you, so...
Okay. Does someone want to put a motion together then on, oh, shoot.
Question. Can I see that slide again of the financial benefits?
Sure.
Member of council among the issues.
Here you go.
Okay, you're saying near-term economic impact, plus or minus 150,000 local income taxes during construction is, okay. One of our problems, the auditor has mentioned, is the collection of income taxes from construction workers. OU has a lot going on. They come in, they leave, you don't pay tax. Now, what assurances can you give us?
I can tell you that we've done a pretty good job of acquiring and getting them registered. And then it's up to their accountants to handle from there. But I know that's been one of the issues, is they're not getting registered, and yes, they are. We've got well over 500 contractors registered within the city. And we will ask these folks to do the same thing.
Again, Ohio University, when they bring in their contractors, okay, they say, okay, we will make sure that they do. And according to the auditor, seems to be a black hole there. Things are promised, they're on the table, we hear that a lot, but when it comes to the collection of the taxes, it's not happening. So how do we ensure, in this case, we're talking some real money here?
I guess what I would say, Councilman Reisner, is that the contractor registration, vendor registration, was put in place specifically for that. So the auditor has access to all that information, so that the contractor working on site is registered and then can track down the tax component from there.
Yeah, I'm trying to think how we could help you on that. I think the problem with all tax collection is, first of all, it sounds like you require contractors to register. And at that point in time, it is a somewhat self-policing system, not unlike somebody that has a business in downtown, that you've gotta have the policing in place to make sure that the withholdings are occurring and the taxes are being paid. And I don't know how we, I don't know how we as a third party can police that. I'm trying to, I'm trying to help you and trying to think of a way we could. Sounds like your registration is a good, long first step in that regard. I suppose, from the city's perspective, would it be worth your while to increase that policing by having further monitoring on job sites to see who's there and, and see who's working so that you have some way to, and John's kind of cringing over there, but, to see if there's some way that you can better account for. We know how much work was done here, we know the value of this contract, and where are your withholdings and where are your tax payments? I'm not sure what we can, I mean, they're not hours to pay, we're hiring Alfred Construction. Alfred, I think, how's Alfred done down here, John?
That, that's not where the issue's coming into play. The issue's coming into play, the contractors are getting registered, and we've got all the information. And when they do their year-end taxes, whether they pay or don't pay, you know, that's how their taxes. I mean, if the company, even though they're doing a job, if they show a loss for the year, or if the accountant works it out that they don't have any income, it works, I mean.
But aren't the, but the... I'm talking about individual workers.
These are payroll taxes, though, aren't they, John? John, aren't these payroll tax withholdings?
Yes, it's called income tax if you work within the city. But again, we, perhaps getting a copy of your signed contract, but that's not something that we normally require. I have myself have driven around and then fed that information to the auditor's office. There's a little bit of disconnect because it's, there are so many strict regulations, federal regulations governing the collection of income tax, that I'm not even allowed to know who pays income tax. They're not even allowed to share that information, you know? All I can do is feed them.
Oh, we're happy to give you, I don't, David, do you see any problem giving them a copy of our final construction contract so you know who our, who our general is and who our subs are? I think that's fine.
That's a requirement in the middle.
It's a good first step. We're not representing this to you so it doesn't happen.
No, no, give it to the auditor, though, please.
We, we forward that information to them.
Again, I don't know if this really falls under Title 41 hearing.
I think it's a real, you know, we have to look at...
And maybe that's something that we look at in the future as the best practice.
They brought it up.
Yeah.
The cat's out of the bag, it's fair to chase it now.
And we're willing to help you any way we can. I mean, like I said, we don't make representations, not look up to them.[1575.23] I mean, like I said, we don't make representations, not look up to them.
Thank you.
Again, between the CCA, we've been able to garner money, realize House Bill 5 has changed the landscape of how taxes are gonna be collected, not for the better for the city's point of view, so there are, there are things in play, and again, in terms of the, what we can know about who collects, pays what taxes is limited to the tax administrator.
That's right.
Okay? So, it's nice to talk about this stuff, but actually, we, we can, you know, as a mayor, I can only go far, as a city council member, you can only go far, you know, we can't count the change in everybody's pocket or take their license plates and try, you know, Googling them or something.
I'll place a motion.
I'll second that motion. Okay, this motion is to accept the.
With all the, you know, required easements and conditions that are captured, we're hearing.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think I'm gonna wait until I see the connections improved. I'll say no.
No? We have one no, four yeses?
I guess so.
We're all set, then?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Can we get a copy of this PowerPoint presentation today sent electronically?
You know what, can I just leave it and?
Higher resolution.
There is a higher resolution on the same flash drive.
Okay.
Can I just leave it with your AV department and they can do that for you?
Yeah, that works.
Well, just tell them, okay, he's giving me a thumbs up, he can do that, so. Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate your time and attention and your, your interest in this. Thank you.
Moving on.
I couldn't let you know, they did start, or they submitted for also, and received their demolition permit, and I guess they're going to start after the first of the year. They're getting an asbestos report done right now, and the fire department is gonna use the building for training, and they have been in contact with Habitat for reuse and taking stuff out.
Restore, yes, true, okay. Thanks for letting them do that, our fire department always likes to get a little training in.
Are there pews in there, wooden pews?
Pews are still in there.
Oh, boy. Everybody loves pews around, for some reason.
Yeah, I had a little chat yesterday, even. Pews are there, I guess there's.
Are you proposing reuse or restore both?
Don't know what's a pews.
No, it's your room acc store, it's not.
I'm gonna.
I would like to see you make that connection. I mean, you know, because I think that this area is vulnerable.
Are there, thank you very much, moving on to communications. Are there any communications at this time?
Okay.
Thanks. Mayor?
No, I haven't got communications. Do you have any?
No, sir.
Report from the city planner?
I just have a couple things. I'm working with a few, a few people in the community who are, we're trying to put together a meeting on January 6th with respect to the Union Street Fire. Leslie Schaller from AceNet, she's been in contact with Troy Logan from the Ohio Office of the US Department of Agriculture for Rural Development Issues, and he wanted to come down and talk about some, some funding streams he's aware of. Mary Ann Reeves, the Chair of the City's Historic Preservation Commission, she's been in communication with Jeff Darby and Nancy Ritchie, who are the principals of Benjamin Ricky Inc., or Benjamin Ricky Company, which is one of the preeminent historic preservation consulting firms in the region, they're based out of Columbus, they're, they're interested in coming down that day just as a courtesy to kind of inventory the site and give some feedback as to what, what they think might be able to occur. And then we're also trying to coordinate with the Jobs Ohio Tax Credit Office and the State Historic Preservation Office, which I think is called Ohio History Connection at this time. But we're trying to put together a meeting on January 6th to talk with the business owners and with the property owners about that. We don't have time set, or we don't even have an agenda set at this point, we're just very early in the coordination.
Okay, but it's on January 6th?
That is the tentative date. Location to be determined, et cetera.
And time.
And like, people who are going to be there, we're not sure yet either. The only other issue or report I have to give right now, maybe two things. We have no update on the, the status of the FEMA flood maps, as far as when those will be adopted or when, when the issues with Nelsonville will be resolved. Last time I checked with ODNR, they said they didn't even want to posit a guess as to what the date will be, so, 2015, maybe. Other than that, the, the Arts Commission, I'm working with a few members of that, of the Athens Municipal Arts Commission, to try to put together a system to do art installations on the traffic boxes around town, that was identified in the Essence of Athens Plan, and so we're working on that right now to figure out a, a process to actually make that happen. We've gotten some quotes for what we think it'll cost to actually do those wraps on them, and then we're thinking about how we can get local artists to submit for it. Very early discussions on that.
Okay, yeah, I saw the chair had put together quite a massive PDF on all the possibilities and all the locations.
Right, yeah.
He's been doing quite a bit of work. I'm glad to see there's some fresh blood there.
Yeah, the Arts Commission's been, they've been very active over the last few months.
Yeah.
That's good stuff.
And so they, do they plan to do the actual, they would have to do like a public work, so you'd have a subcommittee to actually do the vetting for the arts artists?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, that's how, that's the process or the policy that's already been established to select art for public works like that. I got a few other comments, I guess I do have on other issues. I am serving on the, there's a farmer's market permanent location planning process that, at the Athens Foundation is coordinating. We had our second meeting on Monday. Nothing exciting to report at this point, we're really just talking about some, kind of what we think the goals of, of, and what we should be recommending as far as like, what is our responsibilities and what's our work here as a planning group? Kind of what kind of an outcome are we expecting, or should we be, what kind of deliverables should we be putting together with respect to a long-term site for the, for the farmer's market? That process will be continuing into 2015. I don't have an end date. I think that's all I have.
Let's see, I know you had a meeting for the bike task force, bike plan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, that's correct. We've got a, a small committee put together, we had a meeting on Wednesday, or Tuesday of this week.